That is streaming. Chad will be here, he's outside at work. As far as I know, everybody else will be here.
Well, I guess that would depend on how much we need to backtrack. It's been a minute since we met. It's already this because of the weather. And we are live streaming this one. Figured I'd give that cautionary note.
Did you tell me six this morning? Did I? Did you? I told you six there. Oh, no, no, I think you might have.
It's a great place to see them. Eagles work, she'll get those.
How are we doing today?
Absolutely. They've not responded to my request. I don't think they will, knowing this is just a grant.
Let me see it. Hang on a second. Give me a second.
I probably had one in here that maybe not even found. Like I said, it's not so far right. Maybe that would be secret.
Sure the word.
Probably make it on, you can just slide these over when we get finished with the council meeting. Just like six, six, six.
But we are live streaming this one. You can't cuss, I just say.
Where is it? I mean, who's it on? I love, I love the way you had it the other night because you had that hat. Sometimes I'm, when I'm thinking and you're not concentrating, I think I probably get this mainly.
Well, it's eventually going to go back to switching with the plug-in. Did you use on that? It was way out of date, so we stopped with the switching. So, when I was here before the meeting. Came in two hours early. Fixing cable issues, could reinstall or update it with the driver. The system will be done on it. Get it up and sit. And then, now this is active, active to where it'll switch with the audio. It's not doing that with that driver. So, I think, oh yes, just one more.
He didn't, the mayor's not different being here. That way I can look over there and think he's over here.
My mother did a shot.
I looked over there today and I thought, that is not good. Somebody's in the parking, in the parking spot, can they not breathe?
I was one day, was riding a jerk. My truck was in place and she did this. I said, let's just go back. So, I had to come up, I said, we pull up. I said, just pull up. There's, the engine was still running. I ran in. And it took a longer, one of the police officers came over there and said, what are you doing here? And he said, I'm parked here. And Joey being a smart ass, you know. And so, hit the police officer, that you're not supposed to be parking there. You're, you're in violation. You say, who, the mayor's supposed to park here. And he goes, well, what if the mayor's with me? And he said, what are you talking about with you? He said, I'm chauffeuring the mayor. The mayor's in his office and man, and he goes, oh, the mayor's in there? He went, okay, all right, well, you stay here. I'm like, I said, well, it's good to know. Then, you know, they're, they're recognizing you. But then, that was like.
And he said, we gave the town a shake, we've all got our own parking spots in, don't you think?
Yeah, I got, my truck just turned fifty thousand miles on. This vehicle box cracked. And it's dropping water onto the electronic module, or whatever it's called. So, my clicker, my, you know, my door opener, it won't work. And the guy said, the next thing that's going to happen, your windows are not going to operate. And it's not working. And so, every time you lock it dangly, and every time you unlock it, but with the door, with the key, it starts beeping because it's going to start the alarm. I have to reach over there on my shoulder. I have, I go over there and try and get my key into that ignition. And I hold on to that problem. So, it's up there. Guess how much that, just to replace that heat box is going to cost? Little old three thousand. Yes.
Tell them to fix that hellbier by on the side of the lot on their own.
That's another. It's unbelievable what all this stuff costs.
Oh, yeah. Just as a reminder, everybody, we are live streaming this one.
I had it. That thing rusted.
If memory serves, did we not leave off the decks and patio? I don't know. I think we talked a little about accessories as well, and it's in carports, and we kind of just stopped. I didn't know any of it, but it was kind of a vague note. So, I'll stop on thirty-three.
All right, when was our last meeting? That's what we finished. Okay, I've got to stop that three point four, point five decks and patio.
Yep, that's what I thought. So, with decks and patios, this is going to be a little bit different than what the city may fire currently does. With this model code, it's, same deck shall require a building permit and be built to our South Park Commission code. Whereas right now, we don't inspect other park permits.
And how do we go about its force charging? Is it one flat theater, is it based on square footage?
So, we don't charge any, we don't regulate any of this right now.
Right now, that's what I'm saying, but if we do.
So, that's ultimately up to us.
At some point down the road.
Right. But it's, I guess, the ultimate question is, do we want to be in the business of inspecting decks and even patios? That's a decision point right off the bat. Because that kind of dictates how far going it is.
Would that consider new construction, or just remodels?
Everything. If you build a new, any kind of new deck or patio, whether it's a new construction or existing.
We're still talking some problems. Because we're talking about over in Henry right now, what, they're starting on fourteen and nineteen houses? And they're moving fast. So, just for you to keep up with that, not talking about anything else, that's going to, that's going to take some, some time and effort.
Houses, wouldn't a deck, wouldn't, if they did put a deck on there, wouldn't that all just be included in the, the whole checkout when it's like, yeah, you can move people in here now?
Documents in the end.
So, that would all be under, that would all be with the initial building permit? Anything that's existing construction would be a new building permit?
Or how many decks we have built in terms of year?
We gauge that since we don't track them.
Right. So, we're talking about the facility shall require a building permit? And just that, this is all back to patios, shall be built as U D O's, all by the project code.
So, yeah, I mean, we could, we could manage that as part of the U D O, so that it shall be built to code. There's just not inspection of that reason. No permit requirement. And I would kind of keep, in line with what we have, we don't really touch on the extra patios at all in our existing code.
What if somebody said, what is code for, for decks added within the, I'm so, the city of Mayflower? Would we have some?
We would add to the building code, to the parkerage code.
Okay. And then, could the writer understand if he goes, look at that?
So, just trying to gauge the room, this is something we just want to kind of leave it as it is and strike the permit requirement.
I'd say so. So, there's a problem. Right, there's a bit of problem, yeah. I think we're going, you know, there are still many other things that are more important that we may be taking care of. I just see this as, you each kind of, it's something, it's something.
If we have a set branch, or we have the decks long enough, you can get it through.
That's a thing.
Well, so, I mean, it goes on further with, you know, just talking about building that stuff to code. Gives you some examples of those materials that are appropriate. The regulations, deck height. Shall be measured. At the tallest part of the deck in the structure, railing is not included in measuring deck height. But if we're not going to be inspecting these properties, and this is all, you know, pretty much, not irrelevant language, but it's not, it's not impactful for what we need to decide here tonight. Decks attached to the principal structure shall be considered part of the principal structure and shall meet the zones, buildings setback and lock covering regulations. So, with any of our R one, we've got a regulation that says, you can only use thirty-three to third percent of your lot for any type of construction.
You said it was attached to the house. Well, it's not attached to the house, and you don't have to go back?
Well, so, you go further down, even the patios, it's still considered part of the, the overall yard space. So, we're still looking at a thirty-three to third maximum build, whether it's a home, carport, deck.
And have we inspected the backyard, or whatever's not in covered, in kind of structure? And that's where footage is divided by whatever you're, you're wanting to build? If that's how we come over to that thirty-three, something percent? Or how, what's the calculation?
So, we're looking at the total lot size, right? Eight thousand square feet total lot.
But is that included in the house on it?
So, this is the lot, yes. This is the playing lot. So, you're allowed to use thirty-three to third of percent of that.
Oh, including the house? No, I got, I got the deck or whatever else you wanted to do.
Okay. If you had nine thousand square foot lot, you can have the three thousand square foot structure.
Okay.
Including deck.
I thought we were talking about just whatever you're going to add on, which is a house. Okay, I got one second now.
But we're also having to deal with setback requirements too. And as we get to further along, that actually kind of touches on actually setback requirements and stuff. So, we can leave all that in there if we so desire, or we will amend any of that.
What if we leave it? And because we're not, we're not really. Well, what, what should we do? Should we leave it and just ignore it from the standpoint, we're not following it to the nth degree? Or should we be eliminating and bring back L A or N?
Well, we just, didn't we just allow somebody in his mind because he was setback, not part of the road? We didn't even ask, do you have a deck on the back of your house? Because the veil's in fact did, you may not have enough room to start with.
Right.
If you count the deck.
I think, you know, some of this is kind of important to cough up, and at least have that conversation. And if we're requiring the deck to be a part of the total lot, total use of that space, it allows the planning commission to make some better decisions, when stuff like that comes forward. And honestly, I mean, someone could say, hey, I'm beating my fifteen foot rear setback, but then they could take a deck all the way up to the lawn.
Correct. But then we'd be asking for air fans.
Well, as it sits right now.
We don't have.
We don't have any that's specific in our code that would regulate that. And this would, this would establish, hey, you still, regardless whether it's attached or not, the deck, we're still having to beat those setback requirement. I think that's an appropriate thing to do. Goes on further to say that decks not attached shall be treated as an accessory structure. So, we have floating decks out there, it could be out in the little yard, backyard, whatever. Those will be accessory structures, and they have to be at least ten feet away from the principal building.
What speed, impetus for the ten? I read that, I didn't ask you, why you need to do ten feet?
I couldn't say. This is, again, model code. It's up to us to establish these parameters and things.
So, basically, we have, based on that, if you have something like a sidewalk on your house, over to this patio covered or uncovered area.
But as this U D O would say, that would be an accessory structure. And we do have a permitting process for accessory structures.
So, is the sidewalk considered part of that structure, that attachment or not? Because you might have planting, a plant area, that you're planting shrubbery and stuff, a sidewalk. Then your patio that you're building out, it's ten feet, say, out there, but you've got a sidewalk, it's got to be ten feet. You don't want to have to mow it. You want to plant plants in there, or you want to put a fountain there? You see what I mean, there's other, is that considered part of that? Is it part of the attachment, the planting area? The plants or the sidewalk, or is it detached?
I would detach, but it's not, it's not physically attached to the house. The sidewalk runs up to the house. But for Harper versus, I would think that would cap as detached. Now, if it was like a breezeway, you know, they had walls, they had, they had roof or something like that, connected. If it was a walkway, it was, and it was built, then yeah, I would, I would call that connected. But separately, you know, I mean, if the, if the house built, patio might not, because it's not connected.
I don't see a lot of arms above ground pool, back or around it. That's different.
Well, and like I said, you know, as far as city of Mayflower is concerned, we've not really tried with any regulation or restrictions on this. Just a matter of who we want to at this point.
Has it been a problem? Does anybody complain, or is it been an issue to?
Let's face it, mostly this is what we're going to come up. We don't have, we don't have any knowledge of what somebody is, is acting about. You know, people aren't coming to us and saying, hey, I want to build a porch, concrete patio in the back. Or build up on, you know, my patio and this type of thing. But people are doing it, and then we kind of discover it. But I think that's where we are on this.
So, do we feel like it's a problem? Or is it just part of the?
I, you know, going out, I have seen some pretty questionable things.
Sure.
That I don't have any information that can resist it.
Sure.
You know, do I think, you know, any kind of enforcement here would help? Yes, but is this something that we need to deal with citywide? Probably not. I do think, one, the key point I think here is just making sure we're adhering to setbacks on the overall yard space. And not being able to build that deck right into a property line. Everything else, as long as we leave some orders that you shall build to code. It's really on the end of that whole inside.
This is where we would put the, what if somebody decides to do it anyway? And we would say, let's be prepared, tear it out?
Well, I mean, yes. Ultimately, unless they were to come before the board of zoning and try to get variance or whatever they've done. But it doesn't meet the code, if that's how we're going to lay it out. And then, we have to modify it to in that code.
I would think we'd want some sort of team in it, to where we, if someone does build, you know, they're like twenty-five feet from their property line, and then they build a twenty-four foot deck that goes to a foot within their property line. And if we discover that, we need some sort of enforcement mechanism to, to rectify that. Because then you're like, yeah, you weren't supposed to do it, but you did it. Now, your neighbor's going to be able to do it too, because it's kind of.
What if they've got it five foot two wide? You start to five foot all the way.
Good. I think overall, the best way to look at any kind of enforcement mechanism with this stuff would be to adopt this thing in its entirety. And then you look at an overall, you know, schedule of violations or fractions. Violation of city ordinances, you prescribe penalties, not individual sections, but we look at it from a total document. And that way, we're not having to add just so many different lines.
Well, basic point, you know, a gentleman came in here not long ago, that asked for a variance, variance on five blocks, I believe. It was relevant for, you know, we, we talked about that after the fact. That individual has to pay for the variance cost, or the cost to ask for a variance. Is that right? Oh, variance permanent? I think, I'm not sure if that can come off this record. So, that we, we were able to get some money from that, but there was no penalty, no, no penalty of that gone. Of course, in his case, it was already after the fact, when he purchased the ranch. But my point is, you know, we had somebody else that came in, and they just actually mismeasured the setbacks on the corner. You remember that?
Twice, what?
Twice, that's right. So, so, you know, we talked about that kind of briefly. Does this give us any monetary means for a penalty?
We can add it, and I'm almost in favor of what our existing codes already kind of provides for. And that is, if you were to undertake work prior to being issued a permit, then that permit fee doubles.
Oh, oh, yes, you talked about that before sometime, yes, you mentioned, and I agree with that. Isn't that what, what the other cities are doing?
There is a fee for variance if you ask for a variance.
Yes. To enter twenty-five dollars.
For that permit to, or is it called a permit?
So, it's. So, should there be a fee for a variance, and then a fee for a variance after the fact? That you've already built now, and you're asking? The fee was a hundred and twenty-five, if you'd have got the variance before you built it, now that you have built it, it's two hundred and twenty-five.
Well, that's my, that's my point. Right now, we, we did not assign that individual or individuals a negative consequence to, to that. And I think we've got to come up or have a discussion. If somebody is, we face that same scenario again. You got to pay for the variance process or permit. Then, in addition to that, then, is after the fact, so what will be the monetary?
What, what lines of debt?
Negative consequence for doing that? Because the fact of the matter is, right now, other people can do the same thing, and we've already used, we've already set a precedent. All they have to do is pay the hundred and twenty-five dollars. You see what I'm saying?
That, yeah, if it was me personally, I just go ahead and bill, not pay the hundred and twenty-five.
Exactly.
Instead of, you know, wait and see if you give me a variance.
That's right, that's right.
I mean, the ultimate remedy by code is, you shall have to modify what it can build to get it improved. You can deny the variance.
You can.
But then.
Or, you know, when you're talking about two foot off of a, ah, it's been ripped down the side.
That's a, hey, that's a huge negative consequence.
Correct. So, I mean, yeah, going back, you know, that's when you look at the totality of the document, and then we, we start a, whatever that fee schedule is, or whatever that penalty mechanism is. We can put that at the end of it as an appendix.
I think we have, I think.
We kind of need to.
As a city, we're, we should, we should have some dollar amount. If you do, you know, for the process, dollar amount. For, if you, if you, a negative consequence for that variance, just like what we were just talking about? It should be significant. I don't think it should be just double whatever that, that permit fee is. Because I see that every day. If I, you know, if I was building a house.
But if they had to modify, that was, that's a costly deal.
They'd have, if you have to modify. I'm talking about a mon, I'm talking about a monetary.
But that, that gives us options, where you could be ordered to modify, and the variance could be denied.
But isn't that within the plan?
Yeah, the variance.
Yeah, and then even if, even if we say, well, I guess it'd have to be written down if there was a modification expense. Of course, they'd have to figure out what that is within themselves.
We, you know as well as God, if you've already built, you know, front of that house up, you've already got that foundation in, you are not going to even move it a half a foot, you know, or as that goes, so.
Well, he was down the house going to sell it.
Oh, that's my point, that's my point. So, so that's why I'm saying, I feel like, and I don't know what the other cities are doing, but if you're, if you're not going to actually make that individual go in with, cut that house, okay? I don't know if we want to get to that point, but we've got to have something that's going to make it hurt if we are. Yes.
Well, I can, I can kind of pull and see what other places are doing, and kind of reconcile that with our existing penalties and enforcement mechanisms.
I'm just bringing this up, I think that we need to do that, because we're getting into more and more of building.
You know, it is responsibility of the individual, builder, whoever, to, to look into those codes and variances, or the setbacks, patio distances, and heights.
Well, really and truly, who it falls back on is when our inspector goes out there to inspect the slab. That's, that's when you take the tape, all four of those corners are full, and you take the tape, and you, you, you measure, right there. You sure it's there? That, that's where it begins. And that's the easiest fix as well. So, that, that's my opinion.
I agree. So, if the city did overtake on it, they would be liable for it?
Well, that's my point.
Yeah, they would be liable then.
I think that we need to make sure that that's in the process of getting that footing approved. So that, you know, you have to get that, that footing approved before you can pour the, you know, the concrete. And most of the time, you're going to get it approved and pour the base deck, or that after, or whatever. But, but again, I think, now, this is just my thinking. For that first initial inspection, I feel that, that the owner should have every corner identified, okay? Rebar down and with a string, pull, every corner. So, all you got to do is go up there, the inspector, go from the edge of the footing, go over to the string, and you're going to know what your setbacks are, front yard, side yard, depending on if it's on a corner, you see what I'm saying? I, I think, I think that should be a requirement.
But if he went out to inspect it, pulls from the slab to where the survey stake is believed to be, whether it is in the correct place or not in the correct place. If he pulls it and says, yeah, it's good, and then we find out someone stepped this stake in the wrong place, who's liable for it being?
It would be the homeowner.
Well, unless the homeowner said it was in the right place, somebody kid or something go by and got another move.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? That, that's going to be, if, now, if he's there, when you inspect it, when you come out and look at the slab, did you make sure they're there? And you say, oh, pull it from here, and is that your stake? Yeah, okay, you're here, you're good.
Well, I think also.
You know, if you don't, you're taking the word of.
Yeah, but, but what I would suggest, every time I've had a piece of property survey, you know, they're going to put a stake, a steel pin in the ground, or it's already found, and it's got ribbon on it. My point is, that that's already going to be there. And you're, you're going to be able to see that physically. Put a piece of rebar down, say anywhere on the corner, pull a string where you can measure off of. I would want to go to at least one or two of those corners and verify that, that there was a survey stake. Not just somebody drove a stake in. And we can get way into the weeds on this, I don't mean that, but it seems like to, to make sure that we don't get back into what we've gotten. You know, you all know what I'm talking about?
What?
If you, if you started off verifying that, then everything else is just going to fall into place. As far as setbacks now. As far as setbacks now, as far as setbacks.
The inspector did ask when he went out to inspect the triplex, he said, I'm assuming he got a variance.
Really?
Yeah, he did.
He didn't know that we had ribbon?
No.
I mean, the jaw ribbon?
No, he didn't, but he said, when he went out there, he said, uh.
Yeah, because it goes, it's close to the back.
Yeah, he said, he said, I'm assuming he got a variance, I think, he did. Pleasure to hear.
The state did put a road on part of his property, I think it was kind of the least we could do for him since we paid. Yeah, his property goes out into Miller Street and, or whatever, really, it's the second business we had where some of the property was paid over by the road.
No, that, that's a new pleasure topic.
That's the property I sold to build the, the triplex on.
Yeah, yeah, this is the triplex on, on Miller Street.
Not on Cross Street.
Not on Cross.
Yeah, I don't talk about Miller.
Oh, oh, okay.
Miller's, Miller's on his property too. His, when he gave us those, when he gave us those plans, his property line goes out into Miller Street.
Oh, I saw that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I saw it.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see.
They paved over it and I was like, well, you know, if the state even took some of his land, we can give the dude nine inches of variance.
See, you know, see, there goes that because the pipe that I've always gone by, it's on this side of the ditch at that corner. There's a, a steel pipe there and I was told that was the corner. And then both of them were in the wrong place. But you're right, it's really out of the street.
Yeah.
Sorry, I forgot about that.
Yeah, and the one on Cross Street, that was the same thing, they paved over it.
I thought you were talking about.
Yeah. Same situation.
Yeah, the, the inspector said, you know, said, um, I'm assuming he got a variance.
Yes, he did.
I said, I said, my point is, because I had, I had standing thing, I just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He, he followed everything he needed to be, he got that variance.
Uh, so, are we suggesting, once the, the last bullet point F, uh, just to strike that last piece? Regulating the ten feet away from building or structure? Do, do we kind of decide that wasn't necessary?
Unless somebody has a reason why we would need it to be ten feet or whatever.
Like that's necessary?
Yeah. So, we'll keep everything, we're gonna strike the permit requirement and then strike the ten feet away from building or structures. We'll treat a floating deck as an accessory structure, primary, principal deck, we still, uh, have to be able to setbacks and area requirements. Okay? Moving on, patios, this one too, says patio shall require a building permit and be built to code.
It's great, same thing.
Similar to decks, it kind of outlines some example materials. If the patio extends to the common property line, a solid privacy fence, maybe at least six feet in height above the surface of the decor patio shall be installed. Along the cor, the common property line extending the entire depth of the patio.
Now, except if that deck is up five feet, we're talking about now, oh.
Well, it's a patio.
It's a patio.
Oh, oh, we're on the right, okay, I got you, I got you, yeah, yeah, okay. Good point.
So, have any thoughts on common property lines or patio extending to it?
Is the setback not irrelevant for a patio?
It's an out of the building. Well. So, patios that are attached to the principal structure apart?
See, to me, it's a play on words. When you say patio attached to the principal structure, i- if you've got a concrete patio, you're pouring it up to the foundation of the, the house itself. Attached, very few people are going to put in the rebar from the foundation over to the patio. Now, that's a deck, that's entirely different because you will come in and put, uh, beam across there, attach it to the existing, you know, to come on the off. But patio, like we said, this is considered on the ground, most likely it's gonna be stone or any type of brick, right? I, I just don't understand the terminology there of, what is the definition of attached?
Well, I mean, basically, it's pretty much a copy and paste of a deck.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
And so, i- if it's attached, whether it's somehow, some way connected to the principal structure, then it's calculated and it's part of the, the area requirement. The setbacks had to be that. But if it's floating, like if you were to bore a pad for, you know, a goddell or a pergola out in the middle of your yard or in the backyard or whatever, that would be deemed an accessory structure.
So, if it's, uh, to the, the existing structure, it's considered attached?
It's the way I would interpret that. But there's no, no minimums, uh, as far as the deck had a ten-foot minimum from everything else, so. Are we good with the verbiage on here? I, I don't know how y'all feel about the patio and the common property line, cause there is a fence requirement.
They're gonna put their patio around this, yeah, there.
Yeah. On the property line, so. That does seem like an unreasonable.
No, it doesn't sound like that's going to be the point, so we're saying fences make good neighbors.
Yeah.
Right. Your property line is your neighbor, you can, like, between your house.
If you're coming up to that property line with something, and you go, you, you wanna protect that home encroaching, you notice that goes into property encroaching on your property. As I said, if you don't come up to that, you gotta put six-foot privacy fence to block out. You know, somebody sitting over there and your patio's over here.
That way they're not sitting three feet away from you with the ninety percent.
Yeah, I'm sitting there thinking, I've got forty-nine in the front, crack on the side, and then the fence on the other side of my fence is just empty lot.
Yeah.
And then Joe Cotton is behind me, so that would be a common property line.
Well, either way, the back, that, that's a property.
Is that considered cotton?
Well, yes, if you don't, if you don't own a property, then that's gonna be a common point between whoever owns that property and you're, you're setting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it goes on to talk about attachments to the principal structures. This is decks and patios are not subject to accessory use limitations, shall adhere to following requirements. Decks and patios over three feet in height and attached to the principal structure shall be considered part of the principal structure. And shall meet the zones, building setbacks and lot coverage regulations, which is something we've already pretty much reassessed. This is kind of confirming all of that. Any decor patio in the front yard and attached to the principal structure shall be considered part of the principal building and shall meet building setback and lot regulations. Just kind of address this front side, anywhere this is gonna be, if it's attached to that building, you gotta be, gotta be setbacks and lot regulations. Rear and side yard deck patios under three feet in height attached to the principal structure shall not be constrained by zones, building setbacks or lot coverage requirements. Any thoughts on that?
So, if it's attached to the house and it made it only a foot and a half tall, then it's the same nature running clearly through the property line?
Rear and side yard. But I think that's, we also kind of contribute by the, the privacy limits.
Yeah. I, I don't have, I think it is attached. I think if it's attached to the principal residence, principal building, then it should have, regardless of the size of the house, it's better taught. So, prevent somebody from, you know, I've got a lot next to my house and I attach it and I run it somewhere out fifty feet, but it's only four and a half tall, so it counts, but I'm right about my neighbor's line now. I mean, if I wanna pay for all my wood, okay, that's my thing, but I think that, that, that might be.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting little caveat there.
Right.
You basically have freedom to do whatever you want, as long as you keep it under three feet, right? Is that playing all the time?
Yeah, cause this seems arbitrary and, I mean, you could, I mean, we have one thing where it's that you can only, you can only build a third of your lot. And we have this saying, hey, if it's under, if it's under three feet, you can build like ninety percent of your lot because it's under three feet tall. It's a deluge to get out of there, is what I'm saying.
For the rear and side yard, absolutely.
Yeah.
And I'm okay, cause I, the whole point, my main focus with this is clarity and, and it just eases the people to receive this information and to make decisions. And we kind of cloud it up and stuff like this around. I'm all for it, we strike it.
Yes, I like so either. We're just striking all of them, we're seeing.
So, decks and patios that are not attached to the principal structure shall be treated as an accessory structure, which has already been addressed in the previous sections. Any decor patio shall be located a minimum of ten feet away from another building structure. And we just struck that from the patio requirement, so. Delete V three, four, five, three D. Definitely shifting gears, going into drive-throughs. So, drive-throughs are in intensive auto-oriented use, which generate hogway vehicle traffic. As a result, these locations have the potential to create adverse effects when located in the walkable town center and neighborhood, neighborhood center zones. So, these, th- this criteria only applies to these two zones. It goes on for a little ways.
Can I ask a question on this? On the drive-throughs, I don't know where it says, uh, oh, it's over here on the second page, I think three one, four, point six, point one, point two city zone. Uh, I'm sorry, point, uh, six, point two, N city zone, that's on page number thirty-five. On A, look at this, drive-through windows and lanes shall be located on non-street, running sides of the building. In other words, is this area, we still getting back into this, that a drive-through cannot, that window cannot face the, the street?
I think that's consistent with the two examples, photos they provided.
Right.
They want the dri, the actual window and this neighborhood center or the walkable center on the sides where we're. I'm not saying that they can necessarily have access to it from the front, but as far as the actual order taken.
Well, okay, and this is saying again for, in, in those two areas that the, uh, walkable or the neighborhood center, wherever. Let's say I, I, I went through three sixty-five, um, we have a, whatever, a trailer or, uh, a food vendor or whatever. Do, do, do they have to follow that same?
If they're not in the zone, then ultimately it's a, it's a planning commission and accountable to about the zone in the city, so.
You see what I'm getting at?
Oh, yeah.
You know, as, as of right now, every, every food wagon we've got, it, it, their, their windows is, their serving window is facing.
But it's not a drive-through.
Well, it's.
It's a drive-through which would be a, 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 a.
You're exactly right.
A tentacle window. A- as far as the, the zone goes, we've got a, I would presume this commission and the council, and ultimately we've got three sixty-five as the commercial corridor.
Yes, yeah.
That's consistent with this. I think that none of this would apply.
Okay, good, good.
So, and, so, yeah, there are some restrictions, but it's designed to keep busier and, uh, to allow restaurant developments out of borderline neighborhood residential areas. And that's, that's kind of a goal of this stuff, which this is stuff that we're really not gonna have to deal with. But it's here for future use.
But you're exactly right, I, I was, it's not a drive-through.
I'm gonna say just on, back down on the front, if it's a rich corridor or it's permitted, walk the town center, uh, conditional, you know, just wanted to, uh, get it, the neighborhood center, just said, permitted.
It, it ultimately can be, uh, so my goal is, once we, we get through all the verbiage, is then we, we start looking at maps.
Okay.
We go back to that grid and we determine what's gonna be a conditional permit, uh, or permitted use by right, or whatever that's gonna be. And I, that's, that's where we all need to gather and kind of figure out what that's gonna look like. But none of these zones have been established, so we can move stuff around all day long, once we get to that point. But if we're having a neighborhood center or a walkable town center, if we have that zone of all, these are the rules that, uh, that they are proposing. And, uh, drive-throughs for the town center require a conditional use permit. We have conditional use permits in our existing zoning through all of our zones.
Right.
There's quite a few of them.
It's a good thing that anybody who wants to do it, I mean, they, has, has to, it's required come before the planning commission.
Yes.
So, it can be explained and you, the commissioner, decide, okay, this doesn't make sense.
Is it a good fit for the neighborhood that you're proposing, does it, does it blend, is it? And, and really, the way our existing ordinance is now, anything that's pretty much not an old one has to come before the planning commission.
No matter where.
No matter where, which existing, if it's reoccupying an existing facility or new construction, they have to come talk to you, make sure it's a good, good fit area. So, thi- this is all kind of the same, but it kind of guides. And there, you know, so with the, the drive-through, and again, we'll fly through this, cause it's probably not a big relevant thing to do. But it shall require a conditional use permit, and when we establish that criteria, they've kind of gone through and done several, uh, bullet points for it. But I just wanna keep the drive-through activity to the rear, uh, as much as possible and try to hide the pickup areas and the actual commercial activity, just keep it away from the front roads.
Yeah, we don't have this, but, uh, you have, what rather driveway I have now is on, and you're, you don't have a shop, like, dogs?
You, you queue around and you order, you pick up on the side, and that's consistent with, with this.
The bank is around back, pharmacy is around side, um, side is on the sides. Smoke shut down there, something like that.
Well, you never want your traffic coming in front of the building where you're trying to walk in a building where you got, you gotta run out of either way, go.
Just the rear, uh, rear, rear yard of the building, um, maybe you'll scratch that.
A- as far as, you know, what we've got in, in the commercial areas, there, there's no, there's no restrictions on the outdoors or anything like that. These are just these two zones. And I wouldn't be surprised if we implemented either of these two zones at this point to be on, or in that room or that. Uh, so, going back into the neighborhood center, again, drive-through windows shall be located on the non-fronting sides. Parking shall be located between the building, the front or side street setback, no parking, excuse me, shall be located on the front or side street setbacks. And these are things that we can go back and amend if we finally do establish a zone, we can take them really hard if we can, is that right? We need to amend this.
Well, that's why the site plan, coming to before the commission, that site plan is the ultimate. That shows you the traffic flow and everything, so everybody can, one thing to, to apply some common sense, but also to make sure whatever you're saying is going to be conducive to do it with safety and, you know, just the overall status.
And, and really, is it a good fit?
Yeah.
I, I'm gonna kind of bump all past this, cause this is not gonna be relevant for us right now. The next section, we're dealing with detached garages. This sub-section should only apply to garages completely unattached from the principal structure. So, detached garages shall be no closer to the front of a lot than the principal structure, but build that out beyond the front building line. And I don't see, I personally don't see any problem with that, I would, typically they're behind that front building line. But it does give an exception, so if we got a low-density development on lots of one acre or more, provided that structure is located on a minimum of a hundred. one acre or more, provided that structure is located a minimum of a hundred feet from the property line, they can put that pretty well anywhere, but they've got an acre lot or more, and there's not too many properties in this city.
That would be like a large lot of stuff to do.
But do we keep the exception?
I know when I started, we signed a pre-annexation, but we have a bill of insurance on outdoor that can't pass in front of the, of the structure. In fact, we determined a hundred and seventy-five foot setback, but there are five and ten inch tracks, so it's a little bit, but we didn't want that structure.
Right up in front.
Or in the front, or in front of the front. And that is in our building insurance, not how it is with this.
Well, so, I mean, the exception, I mean, do we want to treat everybody and have everybody follow some rules and keep it behind the front building line?
Yes. I think so.
I think that's.
I think so.
I think that would be easy to do.
Otherwise, they'd have a carpentry shop out front, you know, with carver named that. You know that?
That's right.
Or automobile, automobile shop.
Or work.
Or.
Or work.
Or something, you know, it's not that.
Detached garages shall meet the zones, building setback requirements. Architectural style, color, and facing material shall be compatible with the principal structure. But that would kind of preclude, if you've got, the way I read that, if you've got a, a wood structure, a metal building as your garage, I'm not sure it meets that requirement.
Well, we've all seen a mixture of wood panels, metal panels, and some stuff, all of it in the front, some of it, and that's what we did not want.
So, I mean, that, that's kind of a vague requirement, but I, I still think that if it ever made it to a court, that, that's something that any common person could say maybe, that they're not the same. Your house is made out of one thing, and you're doing something else over here.
With that, blue tar, tarts also.
Yes.
Are as exterior built materials.
Yes.
Now you've been doing with the meddling.
Well, it's not meddling. I think it's, we all know where that place is. So we'll move on to open display and outdoor storage. Users wishing to include open display or outdoor storage products, furniture, equipment shall submit an open display permit application to the planning administrator. The outdoor stores of large or wrecked equipment is prohibited in the neighborhood center and town center zones. So right now, we don't really have a permit process or even a conditioning process to, to regulate the open, out in the open display of goods and products. Is that something that anybody has an appetite on? And this is not, they never really outlined what that permit requirement is, but I think it's more just a check to get in front of regulatory authorities and say, hey, you know, an acre full of tractors, you know, right next to your residential zone, or, you know, whatever it is.
Well, this, this came out like too long ago on a potential piece of property that was going to be sold, and somebody, it was a bid, proposed business, it was a building that was going to be built, and in front of the building, between the building and the street, they were going to have a cyclone stance, not cyclone, but a law dryer stance, nice law dryer, that they were talking about, but they were going to be, you know, whatever product they were going to sell, let's just say it's, it's plate line equipment or, or leisure equipment for your backyard, patios, swimming pools and various other things, they wanted those displays put out there, okay, in the front. Based on this, you wouldn't be able to allow that, right?
Yeah, it, it doesn't, it doesn't say that it's not permissible, it just says you shall have that permit. So a real world example comes to miles J-bank, they've got several models.
Exactly.
And with the.
All the loans got all their, like.
Absolutely.
You know.
Is, so.
Is that wrong?
No.
Maybe, I, I don't think it's wrong. What we got to remember also is that, and I'm a big proponent of this, I'm pro-business, you know, we're looking for every dog that we can get for, you know, sales tax remedy, and if that's going to help them sell, then that's, that's it does.
Yeah.
I think both, the two companies you're talking about, did this in, in a tasteful manner, if it wasn't just wrong out there. So.
This would also address, like, sometimes you have folks who have a perpetual garage sale for ten months out of the year. They're constantly, Biden, you know, they constantly pick up and, and put it in their front yard, and the front yard is plastered with garage sale stuff. I mean, it's like, you know, you feel Biden, it's like, well, same, same thing, and they're, you know, and they're running in like a business, so if it's, if it's in an area, you know, if we had something like that going on over here in Vineyard, that may have impacted neighbors. Hold that, if, if for ten months out of the year, you have jokes sitting out there that people are buying and selling, we'd want to be able to go in and be like, this is not, this is not within the norm. Number one, the elbows bobs, absolutely, in the norm, but that, and so this at least gives us the ability to come and tell somebody, you can't have that busted plastic bike out there for ten months out of the year and call it a business.
Well, we, we may not need to talk about this, and I'm afraid it might come wrong, but we want to talk about it in various scenarios you just said. A garage type situation where, flea mortal type situation where somebody continues almost every other weekend, bringing things out, then leave for at least all weekend, and then they gather it up and bring it back in, and then it's just a recurring.
Well, I mean, for, the way I, the way I interpret this, this is more applicable to commercial.
Right. That's why I'm saying, you know, at some point, we're going to address the.
And that, that's, that's more of a code enforcement issue than a zoning issue.
Okay.
Having something in the city council or the type.
And we'll talk about that later if we're getting there, now it's not the appropriate time to talk about that one.
So I, I truly feel like this, this will be more, and the only thing that came to my mind is, with that permit process, maybe you could establish, you can almost have it be a shally she-burger process, it's not conditional. You will get this, but here are the rules, or you can even prescribe the rules, do we want them putting their products display within ten feet of the front lot line, or I know how far back from the road is acceptable. Do we want to have any appetite to control that? That's the only barrier we can rely on, because right now, there's nothing to stop them from putting their product up.
Yeah, except for the highway.
You're only in that four yards, so.
In all, in all of them. So we've not regulated any outdoor yards or any of those, you know, with residents outside of.
But that was just, that was just a question that came to mind.
And we, we could do a shally she-permit, just outlining conditions or in this particular condition, if we just wanted to keep a buffer with the lot line to outdoor, we could. I'd be hesitant to, at least if there was the ability to, you know, address, if something becomes a problem, at least have the ability to, to address. Zoning, we'll have these side of the town, which is a state. But if we did that, we would have to produce a permit with some kind of criteria. Yeah, and, I mean, even, we could even say here that, you know, the, the criteria will be included in the purpose, you know, and they just put it up in the permit, and they, they sign, they agree, they agree with all the permit, they know that. Any, any thoughts on what that criteria meant with that? Uh, definitely the lot line, you know, not having stuff right on the road.
Well, and I think also, you have different scenarios in terms of where that the real state is. In some cases, it's going to be that, that lot line, the front line could be almost up at the road.
Just like. Car.
Exactly, exactly. So again, like I said, on the state highways, that they're going to kind of go right like that, you're not going to put anything up on the roadway, the highway, by the way. I'm, I'm just saying, you know, it, it just depends, like, I would be all for, I'll say on three, and you know, without talking about it in commercial, right, right, so that, I think that's what we'll take care of. As long as we have something that we could go back and say, wait a minute, since your property line is right up on the pro, on the street line or whatever, we really need a buffer there for safety, setback.
That's what I would say is, I, I think that when we were talking about detached garages and certain architecture style, do something to do with like safety and, you know, aesthetically pleasing, you know, because maybe a little bit vague, you know, if we specify things from so many scenarios.
There is a safety. Yeah, that's my point, there's a safety component there, and, and the various pieces of property that you purchase, there's going to be a different scenario there, so it depends on where it is, but we definitely don't want something that impede sight, goes back to safety.
So we do have some regulation that we can control the code enforcement, anything that obscures or creates a, a traffic or a safety hazard, if you're not able to see around that, which is also why we prohibit fences in the front door. That can be dealt with, and so if we're concerned about lot lines, and maybe we just have some burgers that you can't have displayed within five feet of the road instead of the lot line, if that's what we're worrying about.
I would, if you're going to put a foot, I would say ten feet, and then, and then if, if there's a problem with that, then let those people come, come to the planning commission and say, hey, based on, this is where ten foot would be, if five foot would impede in safety and that type of thing, let them prove, you know, to, to come back. But I would, I would, my personal opinion would be, that's, ten feet is not that far.
Yep. From the safety standpoint, I, I think I have higher routes more than five feet in, from the road in my yard, where someone's coming around that corner not paying attention, and the only way to avoid another vehicle is to drive through my, my yard there, if I had a yard sale out there and I was up on the road, all the stuff, anyone looking at things, they're going to be clicked, and they're going to get run over by that car because they, they swing out.
You say ten foot, like, you've got a neighborhood from the center line, so many feet up in.
Every road is different in the city.
Well, the highways.
Even the highway.
Interstate ride, three sixty-five, for effort, you know, I've got highway markers there. So it's got to be from there, so much back on.
Well, it would actually, it would actually be from your property line.
That's the highway marker.
That's where, you know, highway marker would come up with that, but it actually, wherever your property line is, that's five or ten feet inside that, no matter what that is.
Right, because that would send everybody back. Matter of fact, if, if you did that now, maybe red that to them, their building, some of them, I think are on, would be on the ten foot.
Yeah.
If you, say from the center line over to where.
Yeah.
The highway marker is, and then ten foot from there. Which, you know, that, it looks fine, I'm just.
And let's face it, that's why I think this type of thing, this document came about is because over the years, people were doing all kinds of things based on their need, based on their personal.
If we do this now, can you go back to them, say, move it? Then their grandfather did.
Their grandfather did.
So if they ever do move them, they get moved back.
If they ever build something else.
Right, if you actually put new buildings that, like, sell them, right, and put a new one there, they got to move back.
Same situation with the, you know, basically you got a grandfather clock.
Yeah.
But anyway.
So there, I mean, I can, I can try to work on just a, a template for this, if we're trying to do like a ten-foot buffer, and we'll, I'll bring it next time, and we'll see how, see how it works. We'll put a pin on that one. We're, we're okay with the outdoor store, you know, of large direct equipment, this is saying in TC and NC zones only, but we want to expand that.
Big old rent dumpster, the house next to him.
Well, I'm sure that the subsequent residential zones, which we had got to the, what? Top, over it.
See, I talked to Dustin about that, and when all that came about many, many years ago, they were told that that was grandfathered in, and what I asked Dustin, I said, clearly, you know, there's got to be some type of violations there that, that the city is coming in, I mean, that, he, I'm not saying anything about the people, that they have a good business and this type of thing, but man, that looks like a fortress, you know, and a rundown fortress. All I'm saying is, I've had people that, that you've talked to about different things, about some coding enforcement, and they bring that up, so, well, go there, home loss, you know, and.
It's hard, it's hard to.
As far as what, go, and tell them that's okay, if you can't happen.
Exactly, and all I do is, I said, to my understanding, it was grandfathered in, you'll have to look into it.
I keep expecting to see Mad Max come flying out of there all the time. Here it is, or something.
Dustin is supposed to be looking into that.
That, that's a, that's a larger issue for sure. It's complex, and it's going to require some interesting solutions.
And if I was the people there, I'd feel the same way. Be like this, or, so, anyway, we don't want to get into all of that stuff, but, but that's something that's going to be, at some point, probably addressed.
Well, so this is last sentence, is there any appetite to modify this? Do we want an outdoor storage of large or wrecked vehicles prohibited? Do we want to, you know, relegate that to a certain zone, or, because right now, the way this is written, it, it's pretty much permissible anywhere.
Well, in residential, you can't have any of that, you can't have a car sitting there that don't run up on blocks or.
Right now, you can, I would say.
I'd say you pass on the next, you can't.
If you have vehicles parked in your yard, they need to run, Bill. So, they have so many days, not as busy as now, but you could give them, set a car for them, they need a new battery, but they didn't.
Oh, yeah, just one.
Well, let's, let's, let's stay clear on something. Chris has been excellent at working, without care who he is, when he, when, I hired him, we had a long discussion, we, we, we didn't get like this in, in a month, and it's not going to, it's going to take a long time to get where we want to go, but the fact of the matter is, we want to treat people fairly and respect, out of respect, and so Chris has done an excellent job of going and establishing rapport with these people and giving them plenty of opportunity without, without any monetary finesse now, and that's what, what people really get upset about. So, you know, what I'm getting at is, if somebody's having a problem, you know, just like what you said, oh, my car broke down, I lost my job, and so on, so, when he goes, he's going to establish what, what's the, what's the reason, you know, in terms of that. So we want to be fair and, and help, and perhaps maybe get word out that these, this family needs help, because I've even taken my equipment to help a lady take care of her front yard with trees down and this type of thing. I'm, I'm not, I'm trying to point, pat myself a hump, so, there are people in this, this, our community, that when we find people that need help, that will step up and help. So I don't want to lose sight of that, but, but Chris has done an excellent job, and with, with the rapport that we have with people, and that, that's my desire, you know, he's got the right personality, he's, he's fun, but yet he gets it taken care of, so he's got, he's got a good track record on all that, and we'll work with it any five months.
Well, as long as there's a plan that we see forward progress, then, you know, we'll work with everybody's need and ability. But to address your question about vehicles, so if somebody does have an inoperable vehicle with code reads, they, they can apply for an inoperable vehicle permit, it gives them three months, it's no cost, they just have to have it documented, and then at the end of that brief. And then at the end of that three months, they still are still working on, they can extend that for another three months before any enforcement actions taken.
But I think what you're talking about is what comes to mind, we, we don't want to, to tolerate somebody that's got three or four different vehicles out there. Trees are growing up through the sun, you know, drive, drive, driver's side window.
The tree going up.
Exactly, exactly. Those are the type of things we want to try to eliminate.
That's right.
Well, yeah, so I mean, we want to kind of expand this beyond these two zones. Is there a, in, in any zone or any area of the city we would find that acceptable?
Anywhere where they would have, I mean, would we ever have this, this situation where we have a junkyard in the city? This, this would be totally appropriate to see in a junkyard, a bunch of junk.
Well, it's perfect then.
That's why I'm saying, yeah, you would have panels up in front.
Yeah, yeah.
But it had, it would have to be in the right zone, yeah.
And that's why I'm saying, what zone would we have a junkyard because we wouldn't want to exclude it from being a national debt business.
So, yeah, let, let's put a pin on that and as we start working on the zoning and land use, we can identify what that will fall under. Mall Home and subdivision sales office, so, you know, this is very relevant to us right now. Uh, with Clayton Homes is potentially gonna have Mall Homes and then we've got a subdivision, Mall Home and Sales Office all aligned right now. So Mall Homes and Sales Offices are allowed in subdivisions until such time as the last lot in their respective subdivision is lost or per developed. Any problem with that?
No, it sounds good.
Uh, solar, uh, heating and power systems, all solar photovoltaic power systems shall be installed in accordance with the Arctic Fire Prevention Code and all applicable building electrical codes.
So residential, do we have a permit that people have?
No.
Okay, that's right.
But I, I think this is kind of getting into, um, the regulation of the actual placement of the panels.
Would it be on the front side?
So residential and commercial mixed use detached or ground mounted solar panels and solar heating systems are all permitted in the, in the rear side yard, so they don't want a massive ground mounted solar, really.
On the front.
In these two zones.
Yeah.
The maximum height of any ground mounted panel shall be eight feet, whether it be in the side or rear yard. Solar panels and heating systems are not exempt from lock coverage and setback restrictions. The total lock coverage calculation shall include the principal structure, all accessory structures including, you know, whether it's a shed, detached garage, deck. The solar panel goes into that total lock application.
Solar panel, is that how you, you would do it?
So if I'm, for me, I'll be looking at the base, so I, I will measure that base so that. Go from all the way down to the base.
So it's like, the solar panels tilted, you're going from this side, that's.
What I would. Parallel to the, I'll go for the highest part.
Do we have, do you have a, do you have your?
I've not seen any ground.
I have an eight.
I had a dude try to sell them to me.
I had a dude last year try to sell them to me because I told him I didn't want panels, or I told him I didn't want panels anyway, cause it's old tech. And I said, I didn't, I don't want that, and he said, well, he said, we can put them in the side yard, and he goes, you don't even need a permit here. He knew.
Oh, they do. They were.
I was like, it's still a tech, I was wondering, but yeah, he, he was gonna throw it out there in the side yard for me, cause I didn't want it on the roof.
Well, I mean, it does say with this code that, uh, ground mounted shall be ten feet away from the principal structure or accessory structures.
Do we apply that, I had that highlighted, it was applied, like the other ones were ten feet.
Aesthetics, buffering inside access, I mean, I, I know as, as a firefighter, just the more.
Getting around everything, right, not getting all the easy.
And it's just the ease of access to maintain the system. It's pushed up on the east rail. Glare, uh, solar panels or heating systems shall be placed at potential glare to neighbors or roadways as minimized to the extent possible while still maintaining performance of the panels. I don't really have exceptions to any name there. But this, um, still does not require a permit to be issued, this language, you can say this is what it's gonna be. But there's still no permit or verification, site verification of a part of the city for any of this. Are we okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, there, yeah, I mean, there's solar panels and people just have to understand that it is top of the line, the rules are top of the line. Violate the rules, someone's probably gonna show up at your house and say, you gotta change it.
So I'm okay with it. I don't, I don't want a permit for everything that we do, or anything that's booked.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's really worth it.
Uh, and it goes into roof mounted systems. Panels should be consolidated to form an array of panels as opposed to individual blocks of panels on the roof. Uh, they shall be set back from any edge, peak, ridge line, either valley of the roof, according to manufacturer recommendations to make pathways of accessibility as a fire, that's a big deal too. We, we don't want these panels brought up to the edge of any part of our roof, because we have that access, we follow up. We gotta, we gotta have the loads going out loud.
So what is a setback from the edge of the roof where you, you want?
So we can kind of look at some model code and the Fire Protection Code, and we can bring that over to, to copfire act.
But it doesn't, it doesn't import, and it sounds like it is a fast one for, uh, of importance. That we need to get, be able to, to insert that, that footage that you expect, you know, the setback footage.
So I'm gonna bring over the burgers from the fire code and I will have that for the next meeting.
I didn't even think about that.
All conduit or mounted piping shields shall be fully concealed, we don't want exposed wiring anywhere. Uh, residential zones, at least roof mounted panels, uh, visible from the street shall be flush mounted on the roof only allowing a minimal gap for operation safety. Just say it's two feet off the roof. Any questions on solar systems?
But in terms of, you know, I know houses that have these, we're requiring a setback from the roof line back, whether it be two feet, three feet, whatever. But, but in terms of the panels on, on the side of the roof facing the street right now, we don't have any kind of purpose that says, you can't do that. We would have to, we need to put them on the side or in the back, so they, they can put them on the front.
Yeah, they, they're gonna put them where they get the pole somewhere, find by.
Yeah, well, that makes sense, that's what I would do if you do that.
I would regulate that.
But, but in terms of, is there, did you read anything about, you can't separate those panels?
No.
That they all need to be.
They shall be consolidated to form an array as opposed to individual. So they would all have to be interconnected and strung together.
I didn't know how, when you were saying about the fireman with a setback climbing up on the roof. If, if you've got this house right here and you've got panels from one side all the way to the other, I didn't know if, if, from the fire's standpoint, fireman's standpoint, if you wanted a walkway in between, you know, a separation. Of course, we're, we're getting into too much detail on that, but I, I haven't seen any separation.
No, it blows all, it blows, as long as we still get access to the edge.
Just on the edge of the.
And the valleys and stuff like that.
Okay.
There's some way for us to get over there.
And I guess if that becomes a problem, then we would get feedback that we need to implement something else beside, but just a continuous, um.
Hasn't been a problem to date, but you know, this is a forward thinking document.
Right.
Moving on to something that we don't really regulate, even though we do have an adopted code, uh, we reference a code. But swimming pools, hot tubs and spas. We don't, we don't really do much with this with our existing code and all. Uh, we've adopted by reference, uh, a swimming pool code, but I want to say it's almost thirty years old and I can't even find a copy of it.
Well, technically, people want, uh, vents around your entrance.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the home, which insurance, they'll probably take care of around the ventilation in this area, cause they'll, they'll cancel your plate.
This thing, you see the picture as it stands, the panels there. Um, your thoughts on differential, that, you know, they've saying, what have they had? You have rod arms?
It, it just says that it shall be made of any suitable and durable material.
That fence is about two.
There we go.
But it, it does specify the spacing, four and a half inches, so you can't pass through it.
Oh, it's four and a half? How about it's three?
The fence or the wall shall be designed with a four and a half inch diameter sphere cannot pass through any. Uh, and the fence has to be four feet in height or greater. And this is for below ground swimming pools, hot tubs or spas, having a water depth of eighteen inches or greater at the deepest point. So if we're looking at the water depth of eighteen inches, I'm assuming that would be.
There's a, there's a. The bottom picture is a fence, it's just off in the distance a little bit. But that one too, sort of tell. Part of it's below ground, part of it's above ground, that hot tub.
Yeah, and of course, I mean, that's just a stock photo for. One of the gates, too much from that. But a above ground pool shall maintain gates and access points. All gates required by the section shall have self-closing and self-latching devices to keep the gate or door always closed when not used. Except, and exemption here, affordable spa or hot tub with a safety code that complies, uh, with this federal regulation is exempt from the requirements of this section. So if you keep the hot tub or spa covered, you do not have to put a fence. Which might explain a little bit of what they're saying here. But no permit on this process either. This is just terms and regulations we've put out. Any issues with swimming pools, hot tubs or spas. All right, windmills and turbines.
Yeah, a lot of those.
Yeah, and this is pretty, uh, an exhaustive section here. So we want to go through that.
I like the monkey with the whip though.
That's it.
But it, it does specify that if, if you, if you do a windmill or turbine and you need actually connect it to the grid, you gotta get permission from utility and the planning administration, and it has to be attached to a building for a living, so this is not something you can just slap around there. There are some parts of this just to make sure it's, right. Uh, there are setbacks and fits, you gotta have a fit's rights here, stuff like that, so. But anything like this, it'll come with a planning condition anyway.
Yeah, it was crazy, we're wondering how to get a setback, it's one and a half times that.
Yeah, it's a huge setback.
Yeah.
But you're looking for claps up too, and that, that's pretty typical, so that would follow.
Right. That's fault that they play along with that. Honestly, cause they were talking about something seventy feet tall, and I was like, oh, that's a hundred and fifty, setback.
For everything.
You're gonna be grateful for it when it comes over.
Right.
So I think we're okay. Wireless communication facilities are allowed as accessory use in all zones. Towers and award antennas less than seventy feet height open operated by, and this is kind of what we're talking about, it's nice, but. So in all zones, that's permitted, provided that tower under seventy feet.
Does that tire, I would say, have to flatten up, what it calls?
It does not specify.
See, that's what I was gonna say.
Perhaps it should, cause it gets your neighbor with seventy bucks.
Seventy feet, that's a, that's ugly antenna.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it should also have an award at that turn.
But, but we're also dealing with code regulations too, you guys have to have, you know, before us. Cause it's going on the further to reference back for the communication facilities three, three, one, eight, which is what we spent a lot of time on last time.
They'll allow it in all zones. I think that's just kind of.
I, I mean, let's face it, just, just like for Vineyard subdivision, the new Vineyard, you, you buy to just under three hundred thousand dollar house out there. And all of a sudden, you look out your back door, your patio, and here this thing is. I understand that importance, I've got a really good friend that he's into this, I'm, I'm ready to, and, and he had, he had the, the, the minimum or maximum height, that was the ugliest thing in the world, but you have to remember, it's not just a flagpole standing up. You got down guys going all the way across, and then they have down lights on that as well. So at night, you've got beacon lights, you know, at the top and down the structure, and in some cases, even on the down guys, so.
It's probably shot out every other night.
Well, I, I just, I, I'm surprised that they're allowed that.
Yeah.
Well, and, uh, I know, I know, it might be the thunder, it might be.
It could be.
I truly think there, there's some overriding, uh, regulation and guidance that's not provided here, and I'll, I'll research that, I'll, I'll bring that up the next meeting.
But I see, see now, I see right now. Come here and really protest something that you.
But for them to do a blanket permissible action for something like that, that feels to me, there's, there's something that we can't restrict or control. That would be, that would be my guess.
And they do play a, a five and O mode in emergency situations.
Absolutely.
Five and O.
But I don't know what time y'all want to stick to, we're five to eight, and we finish chapter three. And then as we move into chapter four, which is the ditty gritty of the actual, the measurements, the setbacks, the heights. The, you know, all the design criteria for each zone and structure.
I think that's something that's going to take a while, oh, it requires some, some attention, so my suggestion, my suggestion would be to jump into this session and then pick up with our before.
I think our before is something several meetings to get through.
Yeah, I think starting at the Halloween.
Oh, no, 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 yeah.
Just kind of, we'd have to rehash whatever we talked about earlier, so.
Chris is doing a good job linking this through to this.
We're sure.
I appreciate that. We're, we're halfway through, so we got three more chapters. We will reconcile everything and then we'll put together a rough draft. And then my, my goal would be, I would, the planning commission, whoever's interested in doing that, is doing a town hall to get public feedback on this. Get their, their ideas, their suggestions, and then come back and incorporate that stuff. And then we actually recreate this document, have a polished product, to see if that, to see if that can.
And that was the intent all along, the deeper guidelines, some people have, have approved it a hundred percent and then they modify as, as the need comes up, but, uh.
I'd rather try to go through it on the front end and.
Probably always make some modifications.
Yes, well, it's, it's, I think what's back to the truth is that we're all going through this and we're getting updated on some things that you are allowed to make some decisions on, you know, in the near future. And what, it would be, at least it's giving you guys time to think about it and, you know, whether we want to do this or not, as opposed to just being blindsided. So I think it's a great training.
Well, we have to talk through a lot of this again, once we.
Oh, yeah.
It's only related, and then also taking stuff away, putting stuff in, it's only.
But we got to start something like.
Uh, what would you guys say about me, we can have eight people in another workshop, it's in two weeks from here.
That would be three eighteen?
That's pretty great.
Not for me, but.
Not for me.
Thinking of others.
I will be leaving.
Is that on Thursday or Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Oh, it's Tuesday, okay, I will be leaving, uh, but Thursday for Dallas, yeah, that's fine. Oh, it's Tuesday, okay, I will be leaving, uh, but Thursday for Dallas, yeah, that's fine.
I'll work. Let's do, uh, six thirty, five, six thirty.
Hey, I will say this, yesterday at church, Kent was taking after you a little bit of it on your birthday and all, so you've been going to cut some slack.
We got, uh, we got a half hour from, um, Eureka Springs and they called me. I was actually at the gas station, came out, how is that, oh, the hotel, we stayed at the Crescent Hotel, the haunted one. Did the Crescent, just called you and I'm like, oh, so I called when they were.
The ghost.
Oh, yeah, I guess they were, we didn't see. Uh, I left my, uh, my pistol safe in the, in one of the drawers. But I had my pistol on, but the safe I left there, so she, the house cleaning lady, she had seen it, called the front desk. She Googled the name on it and she was like, well, it's a ghost safe, I don't know if you know the name of it or not, so they called. So I had to drive back, so, so it was an hour wasted. We got back into town. We, we hit, got off the highway at like seven or eight minutes until six when we had.
You go to Ken's.
Ken's house. We didn't go home, we just got off the highway, went straight up the hill to Ken Mincy's house, so, yeah. Yeah, that's, they could leave it there a half hour later, so it was less than an hour.
I thought I'd leave it, you know, put it in there together.
I, I looked over, you know, I was in Mesa Poly, I was in Get Up The Bill of Night and opened that tour, you know, it's jokes, you know, I had done it. If I'd done that, I'd see.
Did you all know the ghost?
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's a more down.
I know, I know.
Yeah, we, yeah, we did.
Well, that used to be a hospital.
Oh, yeah, that, that was, it was a, it came, it was no surgery cancer treatment center and I was like. Yeah, and then we went down, we did, we did the tour, um, we had dinner reservations in that, Rose Manor.
Oh, yeah.
And then after that, we could tour.
Yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, it was, it was pretty cool, you know?
Yeah, well, what happened to the shark?
That one was at, it was either eight or eight thirty, so it was at nine.
Well, it's, it's, it's got one that's closer to midnight, uh, in the summer.
They do it from ten to three, ten, ten PM to three AM and it's like a ghost hunting thing that they do. But they, they take you to, it was two eighteen, which is like. Whatever that was, it was like, you would say it was like forty bucks for each of us to do the tour.
Yeah, I got, I know, you could have gone for several times.
Yeah.
Like one husband won't go back.
Yeah.
Yeah, because he doesn't like it that at all.
Oh.
He felt, you know, they were talking about, you know, when you get to a certain point, if you, uh, if they, they, uh, wind or bad atmosphere where you are that turns real cold like you're standing in front of a, uh, air conditioner.
Oh, that's close.
You know, you know.
We got a picture, they had this ice box out there. It was like a box of stuff in there for the hotel, but then they would also put bodies there. So they would get bodies.
For the board.
For the hours there. With the food.
Oh, with the food?
With the, with the ice box, with the food. Yeah, so, yeah, so we got a picture of that, but I mean, yeah. They had those old school ice pots where they'd have all the, the hotel and they'd definitely open it for two hundred, with the bodies in there as well. Until the local mortuary would come and take them away.
No, they, no, they, you don't have a new one.
Oh, yeah, well, they've got it, just, yeah, just put it next to the sloth. Yeah, it's pretty great.